He's doing as he's told quite well so far.
He's, look at you, just so you can be heard.
Talking about that?
Oh, I, I just, I'm being...
Can I stay off?
Pretty good.
Are we expecting Linda and Chris? Is there Chris?
Yeah, Linda won't be here.
Oh, Linda won't be here. She without power? Chris was in...
John Collins.
Chris was in the... Did he get her stuff? Did he get her phone? Shall? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What do you need? What do you need? What does he need?
He needs to get something out of his home directory because he got to do the network.
Okay, um, I think I left the door open. Just, um...
Computer is he going on?
Annette's? Annette's or me? I'm logged on, but Annette isn't, so just... Come get me if it doesn't work. Should I go and help him?
He's downstairs, he's ready to rock.
Chris is there? Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you though.
I'm glad it's a being close.
I know, I'm gonna make sure Chris comes back.
Have a good night everyone.
See you James.
Good evening.
There it is.
There I am.
Hey Chris. Received your seat.
Thanks. Linda's not gonna be here. Good evening, I apologize for being late, I was in Lyme for most of the day. Folks who don't know where that is, that is north of Hanover, Route 10. So I had a, quite a bit of driving to do and I apologize for being late.
Do we have less snow here than there?
Um, about the same, I would say. Roads are terrible this morning, I'm sure everyone knows that. And for folks at home who don't have electricity, um, you won't be seeing us.
I was just gonna say, it's...
On the live broadcast anyway.
A live broadcast anyway. So I'll call the meeting to order, and the first order of business is James will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, James.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, the public is welcome to make comments about agenda items. Okay? Seeing no one wishing to make comments, approval of minutes, March 22nd, 2007, um, meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for March 2022nd, 2007.
I'll second that.
Discussion? No comments, no changes? Very well. All those in favor please signify of approving the March 22nd, 2007 School Board meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Non-public minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes from March 22nd, 2007.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, we don't have my PLOS keys, so no town council report. New Market Educational Futures Committee, Forrest.
As, uh, per my comments at the last, uh, at our last meeting, I'd like to recommend that we constitute a new committee to undertake extensive communication with the community, both in the delivery of information and in the, in the gathering of data, um, so that we can continue to move forward in the plans for secondary education. Uh, no matter what those plans may be, with all the options back on the table, really find out what it is the people of New Market want us to do. With that in mind, uh, I have for you tonight a brief handout, I'd like to go over with you, it just includes a, uh...
Thank you.
Potential charge for such a committee, and this committee can be made up certainly of the people that have been working, you know, on the facilities projects over the last couple of years, um, plus other interested individuals.
Kathy, can you get a copy to Linda?
Yes.
When you get a chance?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead Forrest, I'm sorry.
Um, just very quickly, I would, I would indicate that a charge, a, a charge for this committee might work as follows. Uh, determine the desires of the community regarding available options for providing secondary education, grade six through 12 as currently configured, that will meet the needs of the community for the next 20 to 50 years. Accomplish this through effective communication with the public that provides factual data in a variety of forms, as well as eliciting objective feedback in order to present findings to the school board for action. And I specifically did not, uh, include the word recommendation to the school board. But I think that, uh, you know, the process of this group should be fact-finding and presentation of data, and it is up to the school board then to make a determination, you know, based on that, what we might charge the next step to be. If the overwhelming feeling is related to facilities, then we move towards facilities, if the overwhelming feeling is related to tuitioning students, then we have to go that direction. So I'm not certain that there is a recommendation coming from this committee, as much as there is a presentation of the data that they've gathered, based on the information that has been sent.
There's a, there's a set of findings?
Correct.
That are presented for the school board to consider and act upon.
Absolutely. Uh, again, I present a, um, possible committee composition, which is the same as the, I outlined in the last meeting.
Can we just, can we just stop at the charge?
Certainly.
And talk about that? Maybe take these one piece at a time?
Certainly.
Um, what is intended by your use of the word "objective"? Feedback?
That we can provide some sort of statistical data to represent the beliefs and feelings of the residents of New Market. Public meetings will be an important part of this process, but unfortunately, I believe they can provide a narrow, you know, set of input based on the number of people that choose to come and participate. If we can manage to gather more data from a wider variety of people, we can have some more objective facts to consider. Even those objective facts we've made up of subjective feelings, to, to some degree, but they can be based on percentages and numbers. You know, X percent of people prefer this, X percent of people prefer that, and that's objective in my mind.
Forrest, can I, I just wanna talk for a minute about this distinction between an emphasis on community outreach, gathering information, and sort of getting a sense of where the community is on some of these issues, versus, um, a more technical or specific analysis of something like, for example, a land site, or, you know, different parcels of property which might be appropriate for a building. That's kind of consumed, that sort of technical study and research has consumed a lot of effort and energy in previous versions of this type of committee. How would that part of it fit into what you're proposing here? I mean, it kinda like, take, take, take for example, a land search.
As part of the communication about what has been done, um, maybe if the, uh, as we go through some of these different pieces, some of that'll be more, more clear. But however, at this point, as I stated in our last meeting, we have put two budget, we've put two warrants out over the last two years, both have been overwhelmingly defeated. We're missing something. We're missing, they were good plans, they were well thought out, and they were technically correct in all, in all aspects. I looked at them, I was involved in both of the processes. But we're missing something when 60% of the voters, 70% of the voters turn around and say, "That's not what we wanna do," for whatever the reasons are. And those, those reasons certainly vary by individuals. That technical land search process is information that people need to get. That's part of what we do, need to do in getting people information about what has been done, current conditions of the buildings, factual information about enrollments and where they're going, to develop that idea so that the community can decide if something needs to be done.
But who would, who would be, who would be doing that? In this, in, I mean...
Who would be doing what?
I mean, that type of collection and consolidation and updating, if required, of the information that's, that's been developed already, and, and a new perspective on that type of...
The vast majority of that information does exist, some of it's in large book form.
Right.
Has to be sort of gleaned down and distilled into something that can be sent to, sent to households. And that would, I think that's what this committee would do, they would decide what needs to go out, what is an, you know, an unbiased factual representation of what's been done, what are the options, what would they cost, get all of that out there, and then undertake a survey once we've communicated with the residents and given them all the information in detail, right at their household, so that we can get some feedback based on the information they have.
I guess, I, just to wrap up, I, I, where I'm going with my question is, you know, I, I looked over what you had brought last time, um, and I like a lot of what you're proposing. I guess my thoughts really are centered on this question of, um, developing additional information so that people can have informed opinions when they give feedback. I mean, we want, you know, I, I agree that a lot of this information has already been developed, but I think it can always be looked at again, taking example, again, that idea of, are there possibly suitable parcels in town somewhere? Or, or at least at a minimum, consolidating and collecting in one place the information that we've already, uh, acquired on, on various parcels. You know, that, that's an important part of it to me, and I just don't, uh, I, absolutely, community outreach and, and developing information is, is very important too. I just don't wanna figure out a way that they can both get done, I don't want it to get forgotten.
They may not be able to both be done. With all due respect, everything you just said may be absolutely irrelevant. Land searches and building designs and all that may be absolutely irrelevant, because at this point, we need to determine what the community wishes to go forward and accomplish and do. And I'm gonna use one of the examples. And if this ultimate surveys come back that 63% of the people in town say we need to tuition our kids out, what good is it going to do us to put another land search project in front of them? So I'm, so that may become relevant or irrelevant at some point in this process, we've gotta present all of that to people. We gotta present basically four options as I see them. We gotta present the, we gotta present a fully fleshed-out renovate and expand option, because people wanna see if, and if that will work, they believe, some believe it will work, if it won't, we've gotta show them why. We've gotta, we've gotta put out a new junior, senior high school combined information for people to see, we've gotta put out a new high school, renovate the middle school option for them to see, and we've gotta put out a new high school, do nothing to the middle school option, and we've gotta put out the information about that, tuitioning students out. When they have had that information on those four, four and a half, if you will, five areas, then you can get some feedback. You can't, so if we simply just put another land use proposal out there, we're going to throw another part at the broken car, which we may not fix the car, as I used that analogy last time.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm not talking about ultimately getting to what would be on the warrant article. I mean, I, I'm just talking about making sure that, that, I, I mean, I guess if what I'm hearing from you is suspend other investigation and, you know, stuff like that, until we accomplish the community outreach step, then I, then I don't agree with that. Um, I, I, I think we ought to move forward on all fronts.
I wouldn't say you couldn't, but again, I think with the assumption being that it's all well and good to move forward and find another piece of land, if it's gonna get 63% no again...
Right.
I mean, we're, we're gonna spin our wheels unless we know what the community wants to do and will support that.
I agree with that, I don't disagree with that.
Paul, hang on just a second. Cliff, do you wanna weigh in?
Sorry about that. Um, no, uh, not, uh, not substantively, except for, um, I think Forrest is, is maybe onto something in that, you know, as was stated, we've, um, we've run up against the wall a couple of times, and we need to come at it from a different direction. And to kind of come around to the side and say, okay, what, rather than from a, from a what do we need perspective, try to come at it from a different angle, maybe educate some different people along the way, see what conclusions we come to. But, um, I don't see any harm in, you know, trying to come at it from a, well, what will people vote for, given the, you know, making sure that they have all of the, all the facts in their hands. And I'd like to proceed with, um, you know, surely I don't wanna, you know, have this be our objective for the next 12 months, and nothing else. We need to, I'd like to make some progress on this in the next, you know, quarter perhaps, and, um, and then maybe refocus a little bit and try to narrow down and, um, start aiming at a target. But if we're gonna quickly come to the conclusion that, you know what, no one's, no one's going to vote for any project, no matter how, how, um, uh, cost-effective it seems, et cetera, um, until there's some buy-in as to the, the need, or whatever the resistances are, we, we have to start removing some of those, some of those obstacles before we run up against the wall again.
And maybe that's a segue to the timeframe that I put here, because I think that that, I mean, certainly, this can't take a year. We don't have that kind of time. We haven't had that kind of time for the last two years probably, but, um, we, if tonight, we can establish a charge, um, appoint the board representation to this committee, and approve an announcement letter that could be sent to every household in town to announce that this is going to take place, that can get into the mail tomorrow or over the weekend to Monday. Uh, there is a facilities committee meeting on the, on April 17th, Chris, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, Kathy?
Is it on the calendar?
A, facilities committee on April 17th, wasn't that the...
17th.
So, that gives us that, that place where those, those involve people who know the background, who have done the research, can help us put together what needs to go out for people to understand, so we can begin this process. April 17th to May 1st, we need to recruit any additional membership that's needed, that isn't, you know, already part of the facilities process. Uh, and then through October 31st, we need to accomplish our charge. And, uh, the month of November, that committee should present its findings to the board, and the month of December, that's when we can move forward, just basically how we did this year, moving forward, what, if, and if, and what's gonna be on the warrant. If there are other properties or people, things that come into, into play, those certainly could be done concurrently to this process. Whether they need to be, you know, under, you know, undertaken further after that, after this process complete, you know, remains up in the air. But it doesn't have to stop looking for a piece of property or doing those kinds of things.
Okay, right, and that's important to me, because, you know, I'm sorry, Chris, do you mind if I ask him another question about this?
Go ahead.
Alright, thanks. Yeah, you know, I mean, when the, like, what you have here, month of November 2007, Educational Futures Committee presents findings to the school board. Well, the possible findings that are out there are going to hinge upon, um, the work that's done prior to that point, not necessarily work that involves community outreach. Like, for example, attempting to, uh, figure out if we're going to be able to get a signed purchase and sale agreement on a particular piece of property, uh, prior to that point, because, you know, we, one of the things I think that I, I have learned, I mean, I know that I have learned personally, hopefully we've collectively learned, is that it's going to be extremely important to have, um, a, a purchase come from somebody who wants to sell us a property at a fair and reasonable price. We can't go back down the road that we went down last year, of having that unclear about whether we're gonna have, to be able to, uh, have a consensual sale. And so, the only way that we're gonna know that is if some work is done prior to, um, this, this month of November 2007, you're saying. And my, my fundamental question is, who's gonna be doing that type of work? I mean, who's gonna identify the property owner to approach and, you know, figure that out?
As I said in my original proposal, I wouldn't anticipate eliminating the facilities committee or ignoring the work that they have done. They could continue to work in tho, in those veins. However, I would remind you of a year ago when there was a signed purchase and sales agreement for a plan that was well thought out and well conceived, and it overwhelmingly failed larger than this one did. So it is not necessarily about having a piece of property and having the plan done. It's about understanding what the voters in New Market want, and we don't understand that yet.
The way I, the way I look at it, and I've kinda sketched out here Forrest, in a way that's a little bit different than you laid out your timeline, is, we're, we're, we're building a pyramid. The base of the pyramid is basic factual information about which there's no real dispute. And the factual information includes basic facts about the building itself as a building, the, the program, and the limitations imposed on the program by the facility, uh, the various locations that we've investigated, and the basic options that we've considered. That's the base of the pyramid, that you need to get out there before you talk about anything else.
Correct.
So that you have a common basis of factual information that we're, that hopefully everybody is working from. At least you have some kind of common vocabulary that you can start with. That I, I look at as a first quarter, I call it first quarter, task, to be completed. Uh, I have, I just wrote down here, June 1st, we'd hope to get it done quicker than that, but that would be, you would hope to have that information out and digested by that date. And if there's questions about the basic facts, you would hope to have those questions basically addressed in some form by that point. Alright? With me so far?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. The second quarter would be finding out a way to ascertain what I call a general preference, stay or go. New Market High School, tuition out, just in a general sense, what is your general preference? Okay? So far? Then, that would be second quarter, and maybe you'd have that done by September 1st, but hopefully sooner. Meaning, the information, the, the, the process of ascertaining that general preference out and back and analyzed and looked at by them. Alright? Then the third quarter would be more specific preferences, once you get a sense of what the general preference is, what's the next step? If it's something in town where, you know, in light of the option, whatever options we have at that point, if we have any, um, and what grade levels are involved, is it a high school, is it a combined facility? You kinda get into more of the specific issues at that point. And then, the fourth quarter of course is the vote, is fixing the warrant article, um, getting it approved, getting it out, having it vetted, and so you've built up to that, to that point. That's kind of the way I, sitting here conceive of putting the process together, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's, that would be generally what I would...
I think that's generally what you had in mind.
Yeah.
So you have, you have, and the, and the, the ascertaining the preferences is through some objective process, where you have data that you can analyze and take a look at. And hopefully, having built the foundation of common knowledge, you'll get a better, meaningful response.
And the common knowledge is the key to this?
Yes, sir.
The key to the whole thing?
Yes, sir.
Because it fights against the unintentional or intentional misstatement of facts in order to sway, um, a public opinion, you know, at the last minute, or during the process.
Yeah, and you, you, you can never hope to address everything, especially if you have a sense that people aren't acting in good faith.
I didn't say it solves it, I said it fights against it.
You are correct. And I'm just underlining, I'm not...
Yeah.
I'm underlining that fact. Uh, but, you know, we do the best we can. Okay? Does that kinda make sense as a way to lay out, that's just the way I conceive of the process? And so maybe, in terms of your letter, I might even add this as a visual aid in the back of the letter. Do this pyramid and say, this is what we're shooting for, in a general sense. The factual information we have, we have it packaged and bullet pointed, and it's been out there, um, but we haven't obviously gotten that out there enough. So, that's, that doesn't call for a lot of original...
No, but I think it needs to be repackaged.
Needs to be repackaged, yes.
But, but you're right, we have done, there's been a great deal of research, R and D basically, over the last two and a half years, so it's there, and, um, clearly Forrest's point about understanding what the community wants is, is, is critical to moving forward.
Yep, I think we're kinda ranging all over the place, let's go back to the charge and take it one step at a time. Are there specific comments at this point about the charge? Understanding that it can be, not necessarily carved into stone, if people have thoughts about it, we can talk about them.
Well, just so, just so I can speak about this, is this, um, more specifically, is the Educational Futures Committee, uh, going to be working in conjunction with the Facilities Committee, or would it replace the Facilities Committee?
I, I don't, Forrest?
I'd say there might be some overlap, but I'd say they're concurrent. They're probably, they're not the same group, but there certainly could be some overlap in participation. People that are interested in this, in this issue that have been working with the Facilities Group have the knowledge and have the background, they may choose to participate in this, or we may ask them for help and information. Doesn't have to be the same committee.
What is the Facilities Committee doing while this process is underway?
Probably, in my mind, if there's any further land search or consideration, they can do that. I'm not certain there's anything for them to do formally, while this goes on, until we know whether facilities are, they are gonna be the issue or not.
See, my, my concern is that you're, my experience in the town, and I could be wrong on this, but it has been that there's a, a group of people who kinda do get involved in everything, and I think, I wonder if we're stretching it a bit far. Why, why wouldn't the land search process be handled by the school board directly at this point?
Certainly could be.
Does that make sense? Cliff?
Yeah, well, the, I don't wanna to limit this, um, this committee's findings by giving a foregone conclusion that we're going in a certain direction. Maybe there's a, you know, what I think would be the best thing is different from what the committee's findings will be.
Well, I think, I think the function of the land search at this point is simply to see what options are available. That's really what it is, not to make a decision about where...
To continue to see if there's pieces out there that are appropriate if, if that option comes to fruition.
Who's, who's interested in selling land?
Right. I'm kind of thinking where, in that first bottom tier, if you will, um, process, would, the Facilities Committee could be very valuable in that, in, um, being an information resource.
Yeah.
You know what, another, another thought that I have, listening to you, is that, you know, we do have this open meeting coming up, next, is it next week?
Seventeenth?
Sometime soon. Um, it's not, as, as Chris Bauer, the Chair of the Facilities Committee, has made clear, it's not just a Facilities Committee meeting, it's open to the public, anybody who wants to come. Presumably, we will learn in the course of that meeting if there are significant outstanding facilities questions still, at this, at this point. I mean, um, you know, people will come with ideas and thoughts on the types of subjects that we've spent, uh, you know, studied, looking at at the Facilities Committee the last couple of years. So that, I just kinda throw that out there as, you know, that might be a way to answer this question of what, what role a Facilities Committee would have, or, or still might, uh, have remaining at this point.
Yeah, I'm very fuzzy on what the Facilities Committee would be doing at this point. At le, at this point, at least without some... I mean, if we're not asking to make, if we're not asking for recommendations, and we don't have a sense of general preferences, what is there for them?
There's really just no charge for them.
There's really no charge for them, is my concern, and then you're asking them to stand by. I don't know.
Oh, so what do you, I mean, what do you think? I mean, do you think, that replace the Facilities Committee with this committee, do you think, is that what you're suggesting, or...
Right now, I wanna focus on this, and then leave that aside, 'cause I don't see a mission for them right now. So...
I, I mean, the reason I'm asking is that, depending on what would happen with the Facilities Committee, it might affect the charge to this committee, you see what I'm saying? You don't, you don't see it that way?
I'm just trying to think it through. I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to think it, to think it through. I, I don't, there's no facilities, in terms of designing a facility, there's nothing to consider at this point. They're just spinning their wheels until we have...
Well, the thought that I had, I guess the specific, well, okay.
There, there may be in, in three months or six months, something for them to do, when the general preferences are better understood, but right now, there's nothing for them to do. I, I think you, I think we also have to think about, what is the objective of the next warrant article? It's to express in some way the findings that come out of this process. So, we don't even know if there's a... So, we don't even know if there's going to be a facility for them to be worrying about at this point. So I think it's, I think it's premature to get sidetracked and do what the Facilities Committee is going to do or not do. That's all I'm saying.
And I have to agree with Cliff, that, you know, I don't want to present, you know, that we're just slightly tweaking what the Facilities Committee is going to do, because we're coming back with another Facilities proposal next, next time, or for it to appear that way, when we're trying to seek information.
We just don't know.
Don't want it to appear that the deck is stacked already.
So I would say the Facilities Committee is, I don't know what the word, dormant?
That's probably as good a word as any.
It doesn't have a charge, and it is not going to be meeting for the foreseeable future until the Educational Futures Committee starts working through some of the things it has to work through. So that's why I want to focus on the charge right now, the Educational Futures Committee. We can come back and revisit the issue of whether the Facilities Committee, whether there is a Facilities Committee, and what its charge is, once this process plays itself out a little bit further, is that?
Mm-hmm.
I always look to Cliff for positive reinforcement.
Find a way to change that.
Did he look to me for negative reinforcement or something?
No, sir. That's not true. Everybody has great questions and things to think about.
Thank you.
Having that all in mind, let's look at the charge as proposed for the Educational I think it's stated with a very appropriate level of generality.
Intentionally so.
Yeah, that's why I say appropriate. You, you may have been a lawyer in a past life.
Ah, no, that scares me.
Now it's.
No need to be personal, Chris.
Yeah.
No, it's good, Forrest, I like the way you've written it, I mean, I, I think.
Forrest, the first lawyer I ever worked for said, "You haven't really become a lawyer until you can write a, a single, single sheet, single spaced letter that says absolutely nothing."
So I'm close?
You're getting there.
[laughing]
No, it's good.
Cliff, do you have any thoughts?
No, I think we should move forward in some way with.
All right.
Making this into a mission for a group.
Okay, then let's move on then. Kathy, do you have any, anything you want to add? Thank you. Then let's talk about committee composition.
I wouldn't want to limit any of these categories to four parents or two residents that don't have children.
I think you, I think Forrest intends this as sort of the minimum desired composition. It may or may not be.
Absolutely. It's, it's more the areas that I'm looking, I think we ought to have representation from. And if, if it's eight parents and two, you know, four business owners, great.
Yeah.
Fine, instead of four and two.
Often those categories overlap.
Yeah, absolutely. Certainly, I think they're minimums.
I think, though, we should work really hard to make sure all these constituencies are there. You know, we have one business owner we need to recruit, for example.
Yep.
I'm sure also that you could have some students who would be interested in.
Absolutely, James.
Yeah, there are no student members.
You'd think I'd know better than that, wouldn't you?
Yeah, Forrest, what's up with that? Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a nice minimum size, I think you would probably want to have, be able to divide this up effectively into committees, some of them, you would already start developing your surveys and things before you had gotten, you know, you would work on several tracks at once.
Correct.
To make sure information was ready to go, and that you had the tools and capabilities in place to analyze the data as it comes back in. So, you want to have a nice sized group that is also not too unwieldy. Understood as a, as a, as a sort of minimum target desired, I think it's fine. And then, and not as a cap. So you may want to say, you know, minimum desired committee composition or something like that.
Yeah.
But other than that, I think it's perfectly fine. Further thoughts?
Oh, it's good.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yep.
The only other thought that I had relative to this is that I would like to have resources available to the committee, Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Caswell, the Business Manager, because I think they can bring to the committee information. They don't have to be at the meetings, every meeting, but I think that they should be allowed to attend when information that they have is important to that group. So I would like to be able to include that in some way.
That's fine. My understanding, and maybe I assume this wrongly, is that the, the administration is ex officio members of every committee that the School Board constitutes for the purpose of providing information and acting as a resource.
I mean, there's always an assumption on my part that as an, I'm a school administrator, that I'm going to get the call to say, "We need information about this."
Sure.
And I'm going to, you know, the committee's not going to know all of the answers, we're going to rely on people to bring us information that we don't have firsthand access to.
Yeah, it's not intended to exclude anyone. We understand that every member of the administration is an ex officio member of every committee we have, to the extent necessary to provide information. We don't promise to pay attention to it, but we ask you to provide it.
Ooh. And just general, a general tone of, you know, visitors always welcome, I think, is.
Refreshments served.
Sure.
Sorry.
Bring the donuts, Chris.
I'm having a little too much fun, I'm sorry. Timeframe for actions, I would put yesterday through December 30th, or really whenever the, whenever the warrant has to be finalized, which is usually the second week in January at some point.
Well, we need, we usually like to have that information for December when we meet with the Budget Committee, too.
Sure.
I noticed in the, in the bottom portion there that you mentioned that you would report your findings in November, so that would fit within our timeframe.
Hmm. Okay.
Is, is there any, I mean, is it realistic to, do you think it could be earlier than November? I mean, is it, is it?
October 30th?
It, it, I think it could be. It depends on what response you get and how long it takes to, you know, how much manpower people, it's going to take to get the information out, stuff ready, you know, there's, there's also some, there's also that clerical work here that, you know, isn't necessarily going to be done in, you know, two days and out, unless you can get these 15 people, or any 15 people, to sit on a Saturday and get the envelope stuffed. You know, they come back, if we get 1,000 responses to the survey, let's hope, then that's going to take a while to tabulate. I mean, it's hard to say. I would rather, I would rather set the deadlines where they are and come in early, than set them early and run into a challenge.
These should be understood as drop dead dates.
Well, I guess that, I mean, again, this is kind of going back to what I was saying earlier, and sort of picking up on what, something Cliff mentioned earlier, and has this idea of gathering the information and getting the feedback, and then taking next steps. I mean, because you were just asking Sue about, when does it have to be in to have a warrant article finalized, but that's, isn't there another step in there? I mean, is it?
Oh, sure.
So.
But that's, but that's the hard drop dead date, you have to have it done. You obviously want to get it done sooner, so that you can be organized and proceed in a way that makes sense.
No, I guess what I'm saying is that, getting back to your pyramid scheme and the overall steps of gathering information, you know, analyzing it, and if these, if this committee's charge is to, to do community outreach, get a sense of where people are in this question of the needs of the community in regard to education in the future, I mean, then, and we're going to have the Facilities Committee dormant for a period of time, that we may want to reactivate the Facilities Committee based on what it says. Do you not agree with that, or? I mean, this is what Cliff just said a minute ago, about gathering the information as soon as possible, and then leaving some room in the year to do something with that information.
Sure, I think once you get a general preference, once, once you get a preference that it is stay or go, if it's, if it's stay, do something in town, then I think you recharge the Facilities Committee. If it's go, then there's really nothing for them to discuss.
So is that like an interim finding of the Educational Futures Committee, or, or what?
Well, I think these things are reported on a rolling basis. I think these things are reported at each stage.
So they might conceivably, in July, for example, come, come back and do an interim report, and say, "Look, our initial response and sense of the community is X."
60% voted X, and 40% voted.
Do you have that in mind, or, or, I mean, is that what we're thinking?
If the Board would desire that there be interim reports, that certainly can be done. I'm going to be honest with you, I don't have this thought out step by step for the next six months.
Oh, sure.
Because the, the committee's got to make that decision, this isn't.
Yeah.
This is, that, that's why this is a general proposal.
And you gotta, and you gotta bear in mind what you want the next warrant to be. Is it going to be purchase land? Is it going to be purchase land and take X step towards facility? Is it going to be some, you know, what is it going to be?
Yeah, I don't necessarily, I don't, and I, I'm sure I speak for everybody, I don't think we necessarily want it to be anything, you know, we've got to go through this process again.
Exactly, and that's exactly what Cliff is saying. He doesn't want to anticipate the result.
Yeah, I guess what I was just responding to is if they come back in November with findings, and, and that's about when we need to have the art, there's not any.
That's too late.
Yeah, there's not any time in there this particular year to.
I'm not certain that that's true, especially if we've gotten the information, again, the work that has been done doesn't necessarily have to be done again.
We have conceptual designs for a combined facility, we have conceptual designs for a standalone facility, high school, we have conceptual designs for all kinds of things.
But we don't have a, we don't have a purchase and sale agreement on a particular parcel, though.
That can go ahead under the direct supervision of the School Board on a separate track.
Okay.
There's no reason for that not to go ahead.
Okay.
But that doesn't have to be done by a Facilities Committee. We've already fleshed that out, we think. We're already in contact with, with landowners, and we're always soliciting people to talk to us in terms of selling land. I don't see why that couldn't go on under the direct supervision of the School Board. Because there's no more options left to develop, it's just a question of who's willing to sell to us. And people who are interested in, in talking about that can contact the Superintendent directly. And I wish they would.
All right, all right, satisfied with that. It'll, it'll work out over time as we go forward.
The School Board, the School Board is the land search committee at this point. It's just, it's just the way I, the way I look at it.
And that option can continue to be explored and driven by the School Board. If it becomes an option that is needed, then that work has been done. If it becomes an option that is not needed, so be it, it still won't be work that is done in vain.
Right.
Just to add to that, you can always call in those folks that have worked on the site acquisition subcommittee, and ask them to come and sit with us. There were a number of people, Ron Lemieux and some other folks that, that visited sites and helped us, Skip Manzo, I mean, the list goes on, so we could always call them in and give us assistance relative to that process.
Everybody knows what land was considered. It's not a secret anymore.
No.
Okay.
So do we need to formally charge this committee, that's our next step?
I guess what I would ask for is a motion to approve the charge, composition, timeframe, and general timeline, as proposed by Forrest at this point.
So moved.
I could do it.
Further discussion?
It's dueling seconds over here, if you haven't figured it out.
No, my mind was out.
There's that uncomfortable silence.
No, no, my mind was elsewhere, sorry.
That uncomfortable silence, where I wonder whether Forrest is going to second his own idea.
Oh, no, I was, I was thinking about something else.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you. On the back, Forrest has a quote from Epictetus. Are you proposing to put the quote from Epictetus in the letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm sure there's some that just are dying to know what the quote is, so I'm going to read it, since it's not long. "It's impossible for a man to learn what he thinks that he already knows."
I'm not sure I like that quote. I wouldn't say it's impossible. So Forrest is proposing that this letter, or some version of this letter, go out to the community soon, shortly, to let them know what we have in mind. Well, I, I think the general idea of a letter is a good idea. This is the first time I've seen this, so I would like to spend a little bit of time with it, and I don't want to do it while we have several minutes of silence in the meeting. So what I would suggest folks do is get Forrest your comments within the next couple of days, hopefully, and then bring this back, and we'll take another look at it.
Just, if, if you want it to go out before the 17th, you got a really short window of time there.
Yeah.
My thought is that right now, if I were to call tomorrow about a mailing, it might be Wednesday, probably Friday, before we could get it out, so.
Okay, maybe we should have a few moments of silence then. Why don't we put this off?
You could.
Let's defer this.
Move, defer this and come back to this later in the, in the meeting, and let our presentations happen.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, building principles. Who wants to go first? Should we do it by height? You guys want arm wrestle?
Want the short one to go first, or the long?
Mrs. Brooks, why don't we hear from you first? We heard from Mr. Thompson fairly recently, and he tends to hog the spotlight, so.
Good evening. Superintendent Murphy had asked that we talk to you this evening about some of our goals that we've had during this current year, and any update of information. So I would start by telling you that we kind of concentrated on three major goals at the Newmarket Junior/Senior High School this year. One being that of improving literacy, two being improving behavior on the part of the students as a continuation of what we were doing last year, and three, focusing our attendance on course competencies. I will start with describing course competencies. Many of you may know that the State Department of Education has requested that every high school in the state of New Hampshire have course competencies written prior to 2008, September 2008. This has been something that has created lots of conversation. So because of that fact, Victor Soklo, who is the principal of Exeter High School, and I got together, and talked about how we could kind of combine resources. And because Exeter High School has such a wonderful facility, we decided that we would meet there, and we would invite all the principals from the seacoast area, to include Dover, Rochester, Portsmouth High School, Winnicott, Farmington, I think we went as far west as Farmington, Timberlane High School, Exeter, Raymond, Epping, and Newmarket. We have been meeting this year on a regular basis, and decided that since the core competencies were a directive for all high schools, that why not combine resources? And since Jim Fabiano and our science team really has done a lot of work on their core competencies, and felt that they could take a leadership in this area, we decided that I would invite all the surrounding schools that I've just mentioned to come to Newmarket on December 12th. And I know that I have no space to offer them at the high school, but was fortunate to get the basement of this town hall facility. So all the science teachers from these schools converged here on the 12th of December. Jim Fabiano. Jim Fabiano led the competency direction for chemistry, Linda Albright for biology, Scott Weber for physical science, and Kristen Kiefer for physics. We met, we talked about what the core competencies should look like, and for those of you who have not been involved in this process, core competencies were established originally because of the state wanting to provide extended learning opportunities for students. That instead of always earning a credit by seat time in a classroom, that students could earn credit doing something else. For example, I might work with, at the bio lab in the summer and maybe after school on weekends for an entire year and feel that I am now competent enough to pass a biology course without actually sitting in that course. Since that, the state has said, that's a really good thing to have for all courses. Let's not just limit it to extended learning opportunities. Let's have those competencies because that will enhance curriculum. It will also enhance student skills as to what they actually need to know to get that credit for the course. So for that reason, our science department has really taken a leadership role in the competencies. And we did invite all the science staff here, and we found that it was not only good for writing the core competencies, but for the fact that the networking among professionals was essential to, I guess I would say, almost to their pleasure. Because if you're in a small high school, you may be the only chemistry teacher in that school. And therefore, if you want to share ideas with someone else in your field, you don't have that possibility. But the opportunity to get together with a chemistry teacher from Portsmouth High School, from Spalding High School, Dover High School, and Winnicott, and talk about the core competencies in that course was certainly an enlightening day for them. When we did our evaluation of that day, we got lots of very positive feedback, not only for the opportunity to discuss core competencies and what kind of assessment tools they might use because they are not suggesting that they would be paper and pencil, but instead, they might be demonstrations, they might be projects. That was a real opportunity for people to get together, and I'm so proud of my staff. They each had an in-focus and a computer accessible, so as they spoke and determined core competencies, they could actually put those in writing. And Jim was good. He followed up and gave everyone in the area those. And now, that same team of principals has asked that we host a second science workshop here in Newmarket, and we plan to do that on the 17th of April. The other high schools, after hearing the evaluation, have volunteered, and we've already done English, math, social studies, and world languages. So our teachers have had an opportunity to go out to surrounding high schools and meet with other professionals in their discipline area. So we feel like we've made a lot of progress, and we found that Newmarket staff feels very, very comfortable and that they have a leadership role. They feel like, when they've gone to the other meetings, that we're a little bit ahead of the group, so that's been a real positive for all of us. The other thing that I would tell you that is, I feel extremely important in this work, is that when we look as a community toward the New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation process, these core competencies and a review of our curriculum will be very helpful to us in that process. We'll be a step ahead, if you will. So I'm pleased that we're doing that, and I think our staff should really be commended for the work they've done, especially that of the science department, because they have taken a leadership role in the Seacoast area in that process. The second goal was that of positive behavior. We incorporated PBIS last year, which is Positive Behavior Supports. And we have done that. We've continued. We've done rollouts, and I think I mentioned that at one of my earlier reports, that we've done a rollout, for example, two feet in the door, because we felt that tardiness was a problem. Kids coming in 30 seconds late, a minute late. So as a staff, we felt that was a problem. So we used that as one of our rollouts, and those students that had two feet in the door, many of whom would receive a cool mule ticket. We've done right is right, because our hallways are so narrow that we think the flow of student bodies are so much better if everybody uses right is right. So we did that as one of our other rollouts. We've done a rollout about pickup cleanup because we felt there was some difficulty in our cafeteria with kids not picking up after themselves. So whenever we do the rollouts, then the staff as a whole knows that's what we're going to concentrate on and award students for the positive, rather than looking at the negative, really award for the positive. So what do they do with the cool mules? On the midway point of each quarter, we have a penny sale. Really, we have a cool mule sale. So if I'm a student and I have collected 10 cool mules, I go in the cafeteria. And Mr. Andruski has put up envelopes telling what students will win. And we've asked the staff if they could look in their homes and bring in nearly new items. And many of them have volunteered to say, I will host a lunch with a student or two, and the staff will pay for the Chinese food or the pizza or whatever, and the student and a friend is invited to that classroom to have lunch with that specific teacher. We've secured gift certificates from the mall and different businesses, and those have been raffled off. So it's really given students an incentive to say, I want those cool mules, so I want my behavior to be appropriate, so I get them. Then, at the end of each quarter, we have what we call a behavior blast, on the last Friday of the quarter, for the last hour of the day, and there are several activities. Teachers volunteer. We've gone from Scrabble to karaoke in our music room, to bingo, to, I'm trying to think of others that we've done. Recently, they did football out in the field. They've done dodgeball in the gymnasium. Activities that teachers can present, and students therefore sign up for those. So the last hour of the last Friday of that quarter, they have that option to make a selection. Those that have demonstrated inappropriate behavior don't have that option, and they therefore stay in a study hall for that hour. So many of those students have said, oh, I don't want to do that again. I want to go to the behavior blast, so we think that's helped. We would like to provide data for you so that we too know what progress we've made. So we will be able to do that after the last day of school, because we have the data from last year. So once this year rolls around, we'll be able to provide data to see if we've been successful with fewer written referrals from teachers, fewer detentions, and we'll have that. I could have given you some this evening, but it wouldn't have been apples to apples. We want to look at the whole year overall. Our third goal was literacy, and we were very fortunate last year in our hiring process to secure a gentleman in the position of assistant principal, Mr. Chris Andruski, who had been at a middle school in Maine where that was his leadership role in that school, was they too had the goal of improving literacy. And he has led that charge, and he has three teacher leaders that have really helped in the literacy project at the middle school. So at this time, I would introduce Mr. Andruski, so he can tell you about that goal. Chris?
Just going to bring up a PowerPoint real quick.
It's still out. That's why I'm here.
What do you mean?
It's in the dark at home. Candle.
No, I was actually happy to come where there's light, too. Kind of wears on you after a while not having your light just, you know.
Getting soft.
Oh, yeah, man. It's fricking pathetic. It is pathetic.
Next thing you know, you're going to want to have an airplane that where the engines actually work.
Yeah, it's pathetic. I'm a shadow of my former self. A shell.
Those tankers don't glide very well, do they? They don't really build the glide.
It gets cold, you know, too, in the house.
Does that show up on the screen? Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty good, actually. Not bad.
Which one runs it, Scott? Okay, thank you. I apologize. I'm a little under the weather, so my voice went crack a little bit here. First of all, I do want to thank Janice Murray, Siobhan Mahalik, and Mary McKeever. They are our literacy coaches who institute this every single day. I would have brought you raw data as well, but because the kneecap has only, it starts out in the fall, I don't really have anything to compare it to until next year, as well as our NWA. We'll be doing our NWA test again coming up here in May, and then Ames Web testing. So those will be the three triangular data points that we'll be able to use. So next time at this year, I'll be able to show you, hopefully, how our literacy has improved. The first thing that I would present to you is that there's two major concepts behind literacy in the content area. First is the purpose of education is to enhance understanding, from Howard Gardner. You can't understand or enhance your understanding if you don't understand. And reading would be the cornerstone to that. You can't write if you can't read. If you don't read, you don't understand. With that, we're not asking our teachers to be an expert in reading, but we're asking them to be an expert in reading in their subject content. Therefore, I'd ask my science teacher to instruct kids how to read science texts better. I'd ask my language arts teachers how to teach students to read differently from fiction and nonfiction, so forth for math, and so forth for social studies. So you understand this. I'm just going to give you a quick history. It wasn't, it was some ideas that I brought in. But this was a whole middle school process and momentum that brought us where we're at. We started back in February discussing, what could we do? Because we understood that our test scores in reading, writing, were not where we wanted to be. Again, they were at the state level or above, but for Newmarket, it wasn't good enough. So we started discussing a form, how could we make this better? And we would do this after school, extra meeting times, and we would have 100% or close to 100% attendance from all middle school staff, special ed, and paraprofessionals. The ideas that we talked about were, what are we doing? What are we saying? Trying to bring that common language, and where are we going? When we discussed this, we mapped it out, and we were doing a lot of the same things in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but we didn't have a language to kind of collaborate with when we were talking about kids. So they would hear something in sixth grade, and it'd be very similar in seventh grade, but there'd be no common language that the kids could carry through with. So one of our main components was, we need to find some experts that help teach us some common language. Give us the strategy points that kids will say, oh, wow, I heard that in math class, and now I'm in social studies class. Oh, wow, I heard that in language arts class, and now I'm in science class. So there's carryover from all four teachers and from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. It first started, once we decided that we were going to go with a literacy type of, literacy in the content area, there was a group of us that went and saw Ellen Keen, who's one of the major momentum points and expert in literacy in the content area. So we took what she said, coupled with the team that went to Saco, which is myself, Pat Ballantyne, and then my literacy group, Siobhan, Mary, and Janice, and we heard from Krista Vani herself, who has been implementing this out in Colorado for the last 10 years. On August 1st and 2nd in our building, we had summer training from Thomason Carey, who works as an instructor for the University of New Hampshire, and this is her area of expertise. During those days in August, we had 11 out of 12 staff members that teach in the content area. And the reason that we didn't have 12 out of 12 is because one of the teachers was out of the state. So she was already on vacation. Special education would have been there, but they were at another type of training that was already set up. So again, for two days, we had 11 out of 12 staff members, and we were discussing from 8:00 in the morning until 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. From there, my literacy coaches went to see Kylene Beers at UNH, and then, as you can see, on January 31st, we brought Thomason back. Each month, we set up, and we meet in our groups, and we meet as a middle school to talk about what we're doing in literacy. You'll see it again, but every day, or one day a week, each grade level dedicates a day to talk just about literacy in their content area. So it's a common language that they're going through every single day. And they see the carryover now that they're not just doing literacy on Tuesdays and Fridays, as our schedule predicts, but they're doing it on a Monday when they can bring extra strategies in, when they're actually doing a science class. And that's the concept of what literacy in the content area is. You don't just do it on a specific day. You do it from the time the kid's walking your door until the time they leave.
Chris, can I interrupt you with a quick question? Is it, across different content areas, is it basically still reading comprehension? Or is it very on grade level, or?
Yeah, there's, the way we set up, I'll answer that in two ways. On Tuesdays and Fridays, we have literacy in the content area. They rotate quarterly, so they get each content area for a whole quarter. And the way that we broke that up was on last year's NWA scores. So we have a group that's a top 50%, and a group that's a lower 50%, and they're subdivided, except for in eighth grade. Eighth grade went a little bit differently, and they went gender. So we have two groups of boys, two groups of girls. Because they brought a very interesting point, that they're at a little bit different point maturity-wise, so there's different issues that they could work on within the classroom. And I'll let Mary talk about that specifically at the end, because I'm going to give them a chance to let you guys pepper them with questions and give you some feedback of what they do on a daily basis. So that's kind of how we broke up our reading groups throughout the year. But it does carry over into their classrooms as well. So if I'm in one group, and you'd be in another group, Paul, and you're with language arts for Tuesday and Friday classes for your literacy, even if you went into Janice's sixth grade classroom, you're going to hear, what does background knowledge mean here? Because that would be the same core strategy that all the teachers would be working on at that time.
I see. Thanks.
On February 7th, we were very lucky. Pat Ballantyne got us a grant, and we were able to send three teachers down to the NELMS Conference to talk specifically about how to become better literacy coaches, how to set up a plan in your school, and how literacy across the content area can affect your grades. And what they had found is that Newmarket was pretty much ahead of the pack. There was a lot of schools that were just thinking about implementing this. And this was a New England regional conference. So you had schools from Maine, Vermont, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut. And what they reported back is that, hey, some of the strategies we're doing, Chris, some of the professional development we're doing, schools haven't even started up yet, which was, you know, very confirming for what we're doing. Last point, every early release and workshop day, Pat Ballantyne has given us the luxury in our building to talk specifically about literacy. So we bring in either an expert about literacy, or we go back to our groups and they work cross-grade and cross-content about specific strategies. When I talked about the seven highly effective strategies that readers display, these are the strategies that each group is working on. So this is the basis of our common language. You'll hear in a lesson. Chris, how did you get to that information? What background knowledge did you need to know about writing your report on World War II? So specific dates, things that had gone in a lecture. So that's how they've been introduced to looking up information. What background knowledge, and their specific strategies that they go through on a daily basis to teach kids what background knowledge means. The other six, questioning, inferring, determining importance, monitoring comprehension, using sensory images, and synthesizing. Some of those are very higher-level concepts, which we won't get to until eighth grade. And what we did as a middle school is we said, okay, this is strategies that sixth graders need to have. So it's going to take us 18 weeks in order to get this one strategy down, and that might be questioning. Asking important questions. Whereas, an eighth grader, we want them to start inferring. We want them to start synthesizing material to get ready to write reports and get ready for college. So there's different levels that we're looking at on how we're instructing our kids for grade level. How this program is supported, the RTI model, response to intervention, the special ed. This is three-tiered. Every single kid in the middle school gets this literacy program two days a week. There are other kids that have a specialized reading group five days a week, and there are other kids that stay after school to get even more intense reading, because their skills are that far behind. We were lucky to secure from Janice Murray. We were lucky to secure from Janice Murray, a grant money, so that we have listening devices for up to six students, four or six?
It's six, but we can plug them in together to do 24 if we needed to.
So you could do a whole classroom if you wanted to, kids to listen to different books, or listen to the same books, so that they, if they're, they're, have better audio skills, and then maybe verbal skills, to incorporate reading in the content area. And we just met with a group that is going to be providing us with more classroom sets of, of books. On our network, in, in our school, we have placed every strategy into a folder, so teachers want to say, oh, man, I, I don't know how to teach this strategy today. And they collaborate with one of our literacy coaches. They can actually go right onto our network right now, there's a, a folder that's created that's called literacy, and they can go in and pull strategies for specific different, one of those specific strategies that they'd be working on. Also, what we do is professional learning communities, based on the work of the DeFores, where, once, uh, once a week, I'll meet with a content area group, and that has lagged a little bit, just from other things, but we'll discuss, so that they get a chance for 50 minutes to talk about literacy, specific to science or language arts. And that's helped out very well, because now they can figure out, hey, I tried this in my classroom today, and it didn't work very well. So the two other experts in that content area say, well, did you try this? Did you try that? And, and they're able now professionally to say, hey, that's a great idea. Also, we've had teachers say, hey, would you come observe me do this? And, and Janice be like, yep, Chris, can you find coverage? Or I'll find coverage, can I go observe him during this time? And absolutely. So a lot of collaboration now amongst our professionals in the building, just from 50, sketching out 50 minutes a day for them to be able to talk. And as I said before, they're devoting at least one team time a day, which really turns into two or three a week, to just literacy instruction, how to do it better. Finally, I was going to say, if you have any questions, you know, I can talk about how we put the program together, but the day-to-day, these are, these are the literacy coaches in our building, and they've done a tremendous amount of work, because they support in-house what, what other schools will hire one person to do. So they've taken a task upon themselves to help out their, their colleagues. So if you have any questions right now, I would turn it over to one of these three ladies to ask if you have any specific questions about what strategy they use, or, or how they use them, or just get, get more insight regarding literacy.
You have a question? I have a question, actually.
Please, go ahead.
Is it, the vocabulary, this, this different strategies that you had on the slide, is that, is that entirely new vocabulary? I mean, or, I mean, I'm sure the ideas are somewhat similar to what's been done in the past. Are those vocabulary words new for everybody? Questioning, inferring, things like that?
I would say no. Those words have been around in the professional work, books that are written. Ellen Keen and Chris Tavani, for the last 10 years, have been doing the sort of groundbreaking work on this in, out in Colorado. And it's just basic language that, that is now used by everybody pretty much in the country who talks about reading comprehension. When we're talking about reading in the content area, and reading in middle school, we're talking about reading comprehension on a, on a higher level. This is beyond what most of us grew up thinking of reading was, you know, k, t, makes cat, you know? Well, this is putting your mind to work, using the, the text, and making, making it make sense. And so the language is, is pretty common across the country. In fact, we were already kind of using bits of it, and the re, it, it sounds like hopelessly simple, that you should, that you should use the same words. But we're reminded often that that is absolutely essential. I have students, if I call a bibliography, if I write on a form of examples, bibliography, works cited, and the history teacher writes, works cited slash bibliography, and everything else is the same, I, 75% of my students won't notice it's the same paper. So the common language really helps. And that's, so when the kids come up from sixth grade through seventh grade to eighth grade, and they hear these, they understand what inferring means, that you're, that you're thinking as a scientist, pick the evidence out. They understand questioning techniques, and that's going to be a strength.
Can I address one of the questions, though, you asked, Chris?
Sure.
Earlier, along with the strategies, that it, it goes with the same thing. The question you asked was, are they all getting the same thing at the same time, and what's the continuum look like? And just to help them understand that a little better, because in Newmarket, we're divided by level, by team, six, seven, eight, we're also divided by discipline, so we're departmentalized. So in the sixth grade, we are all doing the same strategy at the same time. Although you may be getting it in math, I'm sorry, and Forrest may be getting it in science, you're getting monitoring for meaning all at the same time. Now, that might not mean that the seventh grade is doing the same thing at the same time, because all three of those levels are very different developmentally. So in August, when we sat down and decided how to, what our plan of attack was going to be, the eighth grade said, well, our kids are in this different place, so we want to do this first. Where the sixth grade said, all right, our kids have never even been out of their classroom, so we're going to start really simple with, you know, pictures, maybe visualization. So we all identified the strategies and what we were going to do, and then in those meetings that we have once a week, we may say, okay, so how is monitoring for meaning going? We had slotted, you know, nine weeks for this, how's everybody feeling about it? Do we need to move to a different strategy? Do we need to back up? How do we need to handle that? And then we move through there. But all of the kids are getting the same strategy at the same time, regardless of where they are.
So your sense of it now, I, the impression I get is it, just, I'm speaking anecdotally, general impressions right now. General impressions are good on this so far? You feel like it's?
I think it's absolutely wonderful. From a education perspective, it gives me license to cover some science that I don't get to cover in the classroom. My second quarter, I did a whole unit using all the strategies around the book Fast Food Nation. It's very high school level, so I couldn't do the whole book, but we were able to break it apart and base it on nutrition. The kids built this whole unit around what should a menu look like, and what should it look like if I want this audience to come eat at my restaurant? And it just was, you know, very, very successful. So from a teaching standpoint, I'm having a lot of fun with it. But from the kids, although we can't look at that triangulated data yet, because we need another year to be able to do that, we spend a lot of time making anecdotal comparisons of Billy in first quarter versus Billy now.
Sure.
And from a lot around having a kid not be able to take the questions at the end of a chapter, and even reword the question as a statement prior to answering it, not being able to identify the problem before they attack the problem, and now they just are, you know, miles ahead of that. So I guess for me, the best change I can see is not only that kids are reading, but it has transferred to their writing. So I would say that at the sixth grade level.
Thank you.
And in the seventh grade, one of the things I found, I'm, we'll be starting a book next week, The Devil's Arithmetic, that deals with the Holocaust. And we are doing it cross-curriculum, and the geography teacher has been teaching already about refugees, and several types of Holocaust other than World War II. And students will say to him, oh, this is going to give us background knowledge for Mrs. Mahalik's class that we're starting next week.
They're on to you.
They see it. They know we're talking. And Chris had asked that we talk once a week. This is a discussion that comes up every day in team, at least once, especially on days that we're, we have literacy class, Tuesdays and Fridays, saying, where are you? Are you doing the, the check-by-trial lesson plan? Because I did that already with my class, and this is what I would change, and I thought I came up with a fabulous idea, and then Mr. Levitt tweaked that, and I said, oh, I wish I would have thought of that, let's put it in our binder for next year. Because we're already working on lesson plans for next year. Janice was able to find some grant money to help us attain some books for our classrooms next year. And as literacy coaches, we worked with our teams to help them decide how to use this money the best way for the team. And whereas some of us have pretty good personal classroom libraries, how can we help content area teachers, like a math teacher that might not have a lot of novels in his classroom? And we're developing lesson plans for next year, how the science teacher is going to be teaching a novel in literacy class, Phineas Gage, how the math teacher is going to be teaching a novel in his classroom, and how that might go. And I don't think at the beginning of the year, we could have gotten the seventh grade science teacher to think he was going to do something like that, because he kept thinking, I teach science. And now he sees that he teaches literacy every day.
I don't have a question, just a comment, and commend you on having a variety of disciplines represented as literacy coaches. That is so important. And that, because normally, you know, the stereotypical answer is, that's the English teacher's problem, teaching him to read. And it, it really isn't, it's everybody's issue. And so, nice job on putting this together, it looks like you're heading exactly in the right direction. I know I'm seeing it at home, so, from my two that are in the sixth and seventh grade, so. And that, that transformation you mentioned in the seventh grade science teacher, you know, you've, you know you have made the connection, when the resistant person says, oh, gosh, I'm doing it anyway. Okay, yeah, this is a good idea, let's keep doing it. And, you know, then they buy into that language, and it begins to make a big difference. So congratulations.
Can I just ask a quick question for the, for you?
Can you just hold on a second?
Sorry.
Did you have anything you wanted to say?
I, I just think it's great that it's kind of given you a common, lack of what a word, a word, language to kind of bring your teams together to cooperate more, yeah.
Definitely. These, you had asked about the vocabulary, the seven strategies.
Right.
Those are things that, when you're becoming an English teacher, you learn how to teach literacy, and they have pre-made posters with them on it, bookmarks with that on it. But in the other disciplines, they teach that, but they not, might not be aware that that was a language that we were saying in our classroom. So it is, it's very helpful, and then how the student go from sixth to seventh to eighth grade, hearing every teacher using the exact same language, I think we'll start to see results.
Can you give us a quick summary of how we got going down this road with this literacy? I mean, how do we identify this particular program? Who, who, who are the key players in getting us going on this?
Well, as you, as you recall, your strategic plan, part of that plan was to look at literacy. We've been doing that at the elementary school, and obviously at the middle school. The, the, the reason for that was, we were looking at data, and we were looking at our kneecaps and our knee-was, and the staff had some concerns. And when we would meet with them in curriculum meetings, they weren't satisfied. They weren't satisfied with the level of reading abilities, they weren't satisfied with the differences in boys' and girls' scores. As you know, you've been looking at them too, and they weren't satisfied with the development of writing. And so, as we set goals in literacy, the team at the middle school and high school, because Pam Caswell's been involved in this as department chair, came to me with a proposal to address this literacy piece in the middle school. And they really took the ball and ran with it. I think, you know, Chris kind of summed that up, but the, the beauty of this is that the staff is really engaged in this, and it's, 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 it's their project, and they're proud of their work, and I know that they're as anxious as we are to see the results of it. It will take time, it doesn't happen overnight.
Okay.
But I think the consistency of the program in the three years will, will, will pay big dividends for our students' performance and their skills. And I don't know, does that kind of give you an idea where this came from?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to identify what the, what the crucial aspects or interactions were that we could, if, you know, if, we, we think, we believe, we hope that we have a, we're, we're on a good pathway here to improve, an area in which we want to improve. I'm just trying to think of how we can, how we can keep that dynamic going, how we can replicate it. I mean, obviously, Pam Caswell had the idea that she was not going to be shot down if she came forward with an idea, that's good, we want to keep ideas percolating. You know, the right people have to be empowered to create these ideas.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons, you know, one of the structures that you have set up is you have Pat meeting every month with every department. And that gives her an opportunity to hear what, what their concerns are, what, what areas should we be focusing on. But I think there's great communication at the junior, senior high school, and I think there's a sense that they can come forth with projects that they feel are beneficial for students. It clearly goes along with the research, all the latest research on how kids learn, and all the strategies, everything that they talked about tonight is really very much in line with current research about middle school literacy.
May I speak to, to your question?
Sure, thanks.
The, keeping the ball rolling really matters. I haven't got all that many more years in the system, and I want the ball, ball rolling really well when I leave. The, when we went down to the NELMS Conference, we met with maybe 11 other literacy coaches from varying schools, some in school districts that were quite wealthy, actually, and, and, you know, in the motel at night, we sat and thought, whoa, have we got it good? And because of the, the things that are put in place to support us. I mean, all those things that Chris mentioned, you know, Pat's work, Pam's work, our chance, the three of us to meet together, you know, with our department, and with our, with each other, and with eighth grade and seventh grade, and just all of those support structures are absolutely essential. I mean, we, we heard of people who were a literacy coach for five through 12, one person, five through, for grades five through 12, in three different buildings.
Wow.
And she had two or three other full-time jobs, too. I mean, and, and it seemed to us that, that it was pretty well thought through here. And I think that's going to be essential to keeping it going.
Thank you.
And the fact that the, I, I just have to brag up the, the teachers involved, we heard of, you know, resistant people. Well, resistant in Newmarket isn't like resistant in other places. Resistant in Newmarket seems to be figuring out how to make it work. In other places, that people are just, the coach has teachers that weren't even willing to talk to them, period, about anything, lunch or anything. And, and our middle school staff has, has a, I don't know whether, what do you call it? It's the, it's the way we do things, is, is really positive and forward-looking, and it's, it's just come into play. It's been nice.
Thank you.
Can I add to that? I think it's really important, and this isn't sucking up Mrs. Brooks. I'm, I'm already here, you know, this is my seventh year in Newmarket, but you have to have administrators that give you permission to take risks, even if it's not necessarily something that is going to work the first time around. And we have that kind of environment in both schools in Newmarket, and I think that both Scott and Debbie and Chris need to be commended for that, because if we didn't feel safe to try new things for kids, then they wouldn't be happening. So yes, we have a great staff, but we honestly have a really great leadership, too.
And I actually just want to say, as clarification.
I was going to.
He's going to kill me. He wasn't in any way resistant.
This is a small town.
It's a small town, we all know who we're talking about. Penny's probably watching.
No, he doesn't have electricity.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it's true, it's on great road.
You know what? I don't think there was one single middle school teacher in any, in any part of the building that was resistant. I think some people showed a little bit of concern, because they are so good at what they do, and they know exactly how they are going to teach, they know the subject matter, and they're fabulous at getting it across to the students. And I think they were a little nervous, one or two people who don't teach reading and writing every day, or didn't think they did, they didn't think they did. What do you mean, I'm going to teach kids how to read? And it goes back to what Chris had mentioned before, you're not being a reading teacher, you're being a science teacher, reading science with your students. And I think everyone sees that now, and is a lot more comfortable in the literacy classes, to the point where students who normally might come to a language arts teacher for book recommendations, what should I read, what should I read for this book report? Now sometimes go to content area teachers to ask them, what book do you like? What book do you think I should read? And especially when they see, one of the things we also do is SSR every single day, and middle school teachers, we stock everything, and we sit down, and we read. and middle school teachers, we stock everything, and we sit down and we read books that we want to read while the students are reading. And we're modeling that for them, and that is so important. And they come up to those content area teachers and say, what book is that? Or, how can you read three different books? Because we'll have three books on our desk with bookmarks, and I couldn't pick which one. And they're seeing that from all of their teachers now, and that modeling is so important.
I, no, I have nothing else.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'd only like to add to that, is that, and Forrest, I think you'll appreciate this more, whenever you want to instigate change with adults or children, it's always a problem. But when we brought this idea, the middle school, we talked about it, I want you to know that the middle school staff have added two planning periods a week, in that they are now teaching literacy in the content area on Tuesdays and Fridays. So what we were doing is asking them to give of themselves, in that they had to plan two additional lessons per week. And as you can see the enthusiasm, they're just, there were questions, but I never would say that there was any resistance. And I feel very fortunate. And I know these three people are kind of the leaders. Mary has been in our school system for many years, Janice for several, and Siobhan is new to our system, this is her second year. But they have really been looked to as leaders in the area of literacy. And I watch staff say, well, I'll talk to so-and-so about this. So, we're real pleased with the program and how it's going. Points of interest that you might have, that poetry wasn't very well accepted at the high school. And last year, we had a couple new teachers join our staff, and they just really didn't think that kids were enthusiastic about poetry at all. In fact, whenever the idea was mentioned, we're gonna start a poetry unit, many of them looked very distressed and like, oh, let's get this over with. So they checked around and found out that there is annually a Poetry Out Loud competition. So they said, let's excite our kids about poetry, because many of them are competitors anyway. So they started their poetry unit and told them that they would have competitions in the classes. So last year, we had our first Poetry Out Loud competition. The only facility we have at the high school to do such a thing would be the stage in the, what we call our music room. And that evening was packed. So it was so well-attended and well-accepted, and really generated interest in the high school English classes about poetry. And some of the youngsters that we might have thought of as being reluctant learners were all excited about being able to present their poetry. That we did it again this year on February 22nd. We hosted it, and there were 18 competitors. And our first place went to Annie Femison, and she won last year also. And so this year, she went to Keen. I can't tell you the date, but I can tell you, it was, what was the date for our UNH Day, March?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth? So it was that Sunday that our teacher took the day and accompanied her there. And in the state competition, she got third place. This is the second year that that same little gal has got third place from Newmarket. So we're real excited about that. It's really generated interest, and I attribute that to the English staff for coming up with such a great idea. Mainly Sarah Cross has been the leader in that program. This year, UNH called and said, would I be interested in hosting a Russian culture and language class for our kiddos? And I talked to them at length about it, and said that we could offer it as an after-school program, would they be interested? And they said yes, because they couldn't do it during our school day either. So they're doing it every Thursday, so I know that there's some little ones out there that are real disappointed that this is Thursday and they missed their class. We have 12 students enrolled, and they are in from 2:30 to 3:45 every Thursday. They're learning Russian culture and Russian language, and they're very excited about it. They've said, could we do it more, Mrs. Brooks? And I've said, no, I'm sorry, the volunteers from UNH can only come on Thursday. So we're real pleased about that. If you're so inclined, this Saturday, our ESL group is having a yard and bake sale from 9:00 to 12:00 at our cafeteria, and all the proceeds go to scholarships for our ESL students. So that may be something you might want to mark on your calendar. Next Thursday, April 12th, is our annual college fair from 8:30 to 11:00 in our gymnasium. Nancy Winterbottom has done another wonderful job of securing lots of business folks from the area, and professionals to talk about their careers with our youngsters, so we're excited about that. Next weekend, on Friday and Saturday, you can attend Go Ask Alice, which we know is a controversial drama presentation, but we feel that it's appropriate. And one of our reasons for choosing that is that there are so many parts, because we've had so many young people be interested in our drama program. So that'll be presented next Friday, the 13th of April at 7:00, and then there'll be two showings on Saturday, one at 2:00 and one at 7:00. So if you can support that, we'd really appreciate it. Our culture fair will be April 18th, that's at 6:00 PM, sponsored mainly by our middle school and our ESL program. The science department is at it again. We're taking all the chemistry students down to Boston University Medical Center again. And this year, they're going to talk about the proteins structure of local fish in this area, and they're going to compare that structure to fish in the Boston Harbor. So they'll spend their day at the Boston City Lab doing that. And Linda Albright is taking, because we want to be, really watch our transportation costs, her anatomy and physiology students will be going to a lecture at Harvard University's Museum of Natural Science, History, on that same day. I just would like to brag a little bit about a few of our students. We had two of our students, Pat George and Taylor Trier, they made the All-Star Basketball Team this year for Class M. And they were also voted, we had two Newmarket students out of 12 seniors in Class M for their performance, sportsmanship, et cetera. So we were really pleased to get two out of 12. Joe Downing and Andrew Krungmani, they made the Boys Basketball Academic Team for the Class M area. They have to have a B average or better to get on that team, and they made that. Also for our ladies, Sarah Montagani, Chelsea Miles, and Audrey Smart were selected for the Academic Class M. So we're real pleased that we're a small school, but we still get kiddos that are, make those grades for those, that criteria. We're real pleased that Janice Murray submitted a application, if you will, to Penn State to subsidize four of our teachers. Janice Willgo, Scott Weber, Greg Thayer, and Linda Albright. They got a full tuition subsidy for Penn State to attend a workshop this summer that goes from July 8th till July 13th. And it's called The Science and Impacts of Weather Prediction: How Weather Forecasts Shape Our Daily Lives. So four of our science teachers will be going, no cost to the district, but all grant subsidized. So we're really excited about that. Our athletic season, spring season, has begun, but there was about a week and a half between basketball and our spring season starting. And if you look outside, you know we need that gymnasium for our spring sports, basketball and softball, that's where they've been practicing because of the fields and the weather. But there was about a week. So Randy Edgely, our athletic director, organized a dodgeball tournament. The enthusiasm that's generated for those after-school activities, we had 150 participants, 50 of whom were junior high students, 100 were high school, and we had 10 faculty members compete in that tournament. If you'd gone there after school those evenings, the enthusiasm in that gym was just unreal. So I really commend Randy for that. Spring sports, we have 70 athletes for our high school sports teams, and we have 55 middle school students who are participating, or at least tried out for our junior high. So we're pleased about that. We're excited, we have a lot to do between now and end of June. It gets very busy, but if you can spend any time attending any of our activities, it will be very much appreciated. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you.
Well, I didn't, I didn't speak. Sorry. You want to get back to your dark house, your dark cold house?
No. Nope. Not that they seem to see what our house is.
Well, everybody's house is dark and cold.
F5.
The screen's not focused in on that. TV's not focused in on that.
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening.
There we go.
I'm not going to talk about the whole year, and of course, the year isn't over. But I did, it's been a while since either Mrs. Brooks or I have been here, and I wanted to talk about some of the important things, ongoing initiatives that are continuing to evolve, and some changes as well. So the five areas I'm going to talk about fairly briefly are curriculum development, non-academic programs in the school, safety, which has been a focus, professional development, and wellness. We continue to look at curriculum changes and to tweak the curriculum and instruction in mathematics, reading, writing, and this year also in science. As you are certainly aware, Everyday Math was piloted in some classrooms back in 2004 and '05, and then the next year was adopted K through 3, with a three-year plan to phase it in by next school year. So now we will be K through 5 using Everyday Math, a common instructional model. Title I, as a point of interest, provides math support at grades 3 to 5. This can change from year to year depending on the way the grant is written and the amount of funding we receive. Typically, it takes five years of using an educational program with fidelity to measure its effectiveness. But we are beginning to see some results. The things that we've done recently, in the last three years, actually, we've provided three-day workshops for teachers in Everyday Math each June, right after school gets out. And we intend to do that again this June. We created instructional blocks for math in this school year with set times. We re-instituted data mentors at each grade level, and assigned building and district administrators to work with grade-level teams on using data for both math and reading. Those are the two areas where we have lots of data. Each grade-level team chose a data-based math goal for this school year. And we also offered free summer school, 2006, for all students who were below proficiency in last year, 2005 kneecap scores. Last time I was here, the board asked me to provide some data on how well that worked out. So I have prepared a little chart here. Now, as you will recall, we didn't find out until June, I believe it was June, it may have been May, whether we made AYP. So we had to put this together pretty quickly. What it meant was that lots of families had already made plans. We didn't have a lot of students who participated, but I was able to compare kneecap scores in two consecutive years. Now, Chris earlier talked about triangulation, and this is only one point of data. I point that out for a couple reasons. For, we chose, I chose kneecap scores as a comparison, because that was the basis of our decision about who should participate. If people were really close to achieving proficiency, we thought, well, that would be really, this would help boost them. And some of the students who participated were close, and others were not close, but they still participated. The other thing we have to keep in mind is that if somebody were in grade 3 last school year and then went to summer school, they also had the entire third grade that happened, not just summer school, between when they took the 2005 kneecap and the 2006. Nonetheless, I did use, build a little comparison. That represents actually five students, one is invisible. And the reason for that is that they did not take the kneecap in grade 3, there's a variety of reasons that might have been. But the numbers on the left represent the scale score. The way scores are reported is that the score begins with a grade level. So those students received respectively, something like a 327, a 335, a 337, and so on. And then as, when they went to grade 4, the, they actually, now keep in mind, this is a whole new grade level and a whole new set of information, the, they did not do better. Most actually went down in math. So it's hard to know what the reason might be, but I'll talk more about that in a moment. This is the fourth grade students who participated, and they remained at about the same level. A score of 40 represents proficiency standard at any grade level. In grade 5, there were three students, and one went way up, that was really good. The light blue on the right person went up slightly, that was also good. But again, one of the students went down. But keep in mind, this is not a true scientific kind of test, because as I said, there was a whole school year in between, not just summer school. The plan for mathematics is that we continue implementation of Everyday Math to grade 5 in the coming school year. We provide additional training this summer, increased training for paraprofessionals. We're currently working on plans for next year's professional development. Investigate additional support for math students at earlier grade levels, that's something that I hear fairly frequently, that teachers would like more support in the classroom for students who struggle with math. Also, I'd like to, and we are evaluating instructional materials used in summer school to help teach math. I have some things I've received in the mail this year that I'm taking a look at, and I've had other people look at. We also are investigating approaches designed specifically to address needs of low-achieving students and students with learning disabilities. A common observation with Everyday Math, and I believe also with mathematics, is that it's so language-based that students who have difficulty in that area, even if they're good math students, they may not do well in math because of the language. We are currently reviewing also the new third edition of Everyday Math. One of the selling points being that it helps teachers differentiate and provide various means of learning for a diverse student body. Also, one of the suggestions would be to consider mid-year Northwest Assessment, because that's a formative assessment to help teachers learn earlier if students are struggling, and if so, how. Reading. Historically, we have used a four-blocks approach to reading, including guided reading, self-selected reading, writing, and word study at all grade levels. The strength of this approach is that it's based in literature, and the Achilles' heel, if you will, is that teachers need to create a lot of the lessons themselves, and it's difficult to assure, as they were talking about at the middle school, a common language from grade level and even in classes at the same grade level. a common language from grade level and even in classes at the same grade level. As you probably do know, we piloted Scott Forsman reading in kindergarten last school year and Houghton Mifflin reading in eight classrooms this year. We also offered Summer Reading Academy for all staff last July. We had more than 20, I think it was like 23 students, teachers who participated in that. We established consistent 60- to 90-minute reading blocks, K through 5 this year, and provided on-the-job training in using explicit teaching techniques in a 90-minute block with the same presenter who presented the academy last summer. We also instituted a three-tier model of instruction that you heard some about from the middle school and high school, providing additional small-group instruction to those who meet criteria based on data. As with math, we assigned administrators and data mentors to work the grade-level teams. And each grade-level team also chose a goal in reading for this year. And we also have, through the special ed department, been providing specific reading intervention training to special ed and then sometimes also reading, ESOL, and Title 1 staff. It's been busy. The 3rd grade has piloted a spelling program called Rebecca Sitten Spelling. We offered free summer school, as you saw, for math last summer for any students who did not make proficiency. And we hoped, hoping still to institute a grant-funded extended-day kindergarten for selected students this spring. We had a teacher all signed up, and unfortunately, that fell through. So we're still looking. The results from, the results from summer school, as far as reading goes, were more encouraging, and I'm still sorting through why this would be. But there you see four students listed in grade 3 last school year. And those same four students, actually nearly all of the students improved quite significantly. Again, we can't attribute this only to summer school, that would be foolhardy. They also had a whole year of teaching. This is from grade 4 to grade 5, one student. And then grade 5, there is a student who participated but did not take the exam, but as a 6th grader, scored a 655 on the reading portion of the kneecap. And as for the reading plan, there is a recommendation forthcoming on reading practices and comprehensive programs from the elementary study committee. So I'm going to leave that for right now. Writing continues to be a concern, not only at our school but statewide. But we have had the Collins Writing Program in place for several years, and we established focus correction areas at each grade level at that time. The FCAs are very similar to what the reading teachers in the middle school were talking about, that we all agree to focus on just these things because you can't teach everything at once. This year, we provided on-the-job training to review with veteran staff and train new staff. We also have created a plan to implement handwriting without tiers, which is handwriting mechanics, that's not writing process, K through 2 in 2007 through 8. I read something recently that interested me a lot. Two or three years ago, high school sophomores took the first-ever SAT that had an essay portion. And the people who assessed it, can't think of the name right now, in Princeton, New Jersey. And then it was reported that only 15% of the students who took it used course of writing. And I thought that was a very interesting and somewhat shocking reality. I think our students in Newmarket do much better. We have quite a formalized plan to teach that. The writing plan would be to continue training in Collins Writing as necessary to ensure fidelity and to implement the handwriting with tiers, without tiers, next year through grade 2. Science, just briefly, teachers K through 12, as you know, are working on creating curriculum maps and lessons to be up-to-date. And that should read by fall 2007, not 2008.
It's not an option, Paul. You can't have handwriting with tiers or handwriting without.
Oh.
The program is handwriting without tiers.
That's right. And it's not anything to do with the three tiers. I've had to make that clarification several times. Thank you for making that clear.
It's not an option.
That's right.
It's handwriting with tiers.
That's right. Different tiers. We will participate in the new kneecap test for science in grade 4 next month. We don't have a lot of information, it's still being developed. But it's two 90-minute sessions for students in grade 4, 8, and 11, I believe. We also aren't just about curriculum. You know, we see the whole student, and that's an important part of our discussion as we focus so much time on curriculum. But we're adding non-academic programs for students as well. This is the second year that Mrs. Stowe has been running. She did this a number of years ago, I understand, but I think she started it up again last year, the Colorful Visions Paint Club. We have, the book fair arrived yesterday. And I would like to acknowledge members of the PTA who actually came in today with their children, even though it was a snow day, and set up the book fair, so it's all ready to go. That was very kind of all of them. And so, the reason I mention that is that next week, when we have parent night for book fair on Wednesday, the 11th, we also have the annual art show. Through our wellness program, which was being funded by savings from the insurance change last year, we have yoga for kids. We have, for two years, received a Healthy New Hampshire grant supporting well, physical activity and nutrition. Last year, we added a biking club. This year, the biking club is extending to the kindergarten with a process of tricycles and minibikes. But I hasten to add, it's not the motorized kind, it's the little ones. And also, programs in nutrition. Oh, that's what I just said. And we added a new program to recognize students for their, actually meeting any one of our goals in the school. It could be for their citizenship, for their academics. We look at the whole student, as I said. And we began that in January, it's been quite a success, I think. The students earn positive notoriety, if there is such a thing. We post their picture and what things they did to earn that award. And they also get a coveted pass to get things for free at the school store. So that's quite an event.
You haven't, there's no black market in those passes.
No, I change the color every month, so I'm able to track, you know, make sure. But no, that's, we escape a lot of that. There's also a plan to have a LEGO robotics team for next year. Some parents are involved in developing that and have applied for a Newmarket Community Education Partnership Grant to help support that. This year, we had a visiting musician, Randy Armstrong, in the winter, funded by the PTA. We have a week-long visit of the Monchire Museum, I'm not sure of that spelling. But it's going to be set up in the gym, it'll take up the whole gym, and it's a hand-on, hands-on live science experience for all students, K through 5, also funded by the PTA. We have a visiting author to help support literacy and to bring it into the community, and that is planned for next year. Our reading staff is working on that now. As you'll recall, funded in the school budget, is French and Spanish as an after-school activity for next year for students to just get a sense of foreign languages. We don't have time right now, and it's school day. Also, after-school archery is supported in the budget, and there is an archery competition set for, I believe the date is April 19th. It will, I'm sure, be on the school website. Safety, that has been a focus of many discussions. Naturally, we have annual assemblies from fire, police, bus safety. As you recall, we had to put in place a new volunteer policy. We've done about 150 background checks to date, and they're still coming in. People have been just wonderful about that. We added electronic coded entry to the rear doors and a secure front entrance during the school day. Edie Bodett mans the buzzer, and sometimes she gets pretty busy. The other day, the phone rang and she let somebody in the front door, or vice versa, I forget which. But you know, she has those buzzers and the fax machine and people calling from the classroom. But she keeps a good spirit about it.
So all the other doors are secured to the building now?
Yes, we have a coded entrance now coming in from the kindergarten area. We have electronic codes on the infrequently-used doors. And the other doors, to my knowledge, are closed. They're supposed to be, if they're not, that's an oversight.
So that, the one in between the trailers and the kindergarten there?
That's the one I'm talking about.
That has the code?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we do have to get the locksmith back, there's been a little problem with it. But, but we do use it.
Thank you.
Yes. Also, as you recall, there's a new law that any school function, in or out of school, requires somebody who's CPR and first aid-trained. Mrs. Beach and Mary...
Pessenden.
Pessenden, excuse me, Mary, at the high school have worked together. And between them, they've trained 54 staff members in CPR and 28 in first aid. So we can always find somebody to go on a field trip. I'll be very brief with this. A lot of staff development this year. The special ed department has been focusing on things like progress monitoring, using data, reading interventions, the five big ideas of reading. And we've had embedded professional development. That's kind of a new idea that we've been trying out. And what we do is we have, we bring in a set of subs. Teachers sign up for a one-hour block out of their classroom. The subs cover for those teachers, and that way, we can get everybody trained efficiently. We, we did a training like this for Smartboards, one for Linux, which is the open software system that we're developing. We had to change the planned one for PowerPoint, but we have those planned. Also, data interpretation, curriculum mapping, John Collins Writing and Teaching Reading in a block or tiered program. Lastly, we have a lot of wellness programs for adults. Yoga, bone mass and density screening, cholesterol screening was done in the school, workshops in nutrition and stress management, and everyone's current favorite, I think, walking club. The reason that's the favorite is that so many people participated. And as I'm sure you're also aware, the schools were involved as the starting and ending place for the first-ever Great Bay Half Marathon on Sunday last week. I'm just delighted to say that we had 22 people from the elementary school who walked for the half marathon. So it benefits, among other things, the Derek Johnson Memorial Scholarship. So it's been a busy year at the school. I don't know who that old guy is on the left, but I'm sure he's not that old. And that's it. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
All righty.
Just an apology, Mr. Thompson, from my phone. It was my phone ringing during your presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was about a friend from California, he's probably the only person who doesn't know he shouldn't call me on Thursday nights.
Oh, thank you.
I apologize for that, as well as to the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Memo from Mrs. Brooks regarding graduating class of 2007. I'm sorry? We do.
Well, of course, Mrs. Brooks wrote this March 28th.
So it's her fault? Unduly optimistic.
Because we really thought we were golden.
Jinxed it.
And I regret to say that, wouldn't you know, today was a snow day. We had hoped that it would only be a, you know, a delayed opening. But obviously, the travel this morning was not good, and the power outages just wreaked havoc throughout the community. However, as you know, you attend school for 181 days, so you always have a buffer day. And we've had two snow days, and so we're still going to be able to ensure that our seniors have 175 days so that that will allow them. And the recommendation from Mrs. Brooks is that they be allowed to graduate on Friday, June 8th. I hate to wait too much longer. I have received several emails from parents, and they've been very patient. You know, they understand weather, they understand the standard, which is the number of days. We've been pretty careful about that. So I would ask that you support Mrs. Brooks' recommendation for graduation to be held Friday, June 8th at Land Rock Field.
Do we have power in the school buildings?
Yes, we do. We were lucky, both buildings had power. And I checked to both buildings this morning, and we were, we were fine, we were humming.
Any questions?
Make a motion, we accept the recommendation of setting graduation for Friday, June 8th, with the understanding that should we get one more snow day, we request a waiver for that day from the state so that we can still attempt to hold it.
The commissioner has made it very clear that he's not in the, in favor of...
Not in the waiver business this year.
He's not in the waiver business. As you know, in the past, our seniors have attended school on Saturday, and it's been very successful.
Okay.
Should we, should that be necessary?
I have told seniors that if we have a flood day, we would be forced to go to school on Saturday.
They've been very good about that in the past. We've challenged them to be responsible about it, and they have been very responsible about it.
Well, I amend my emotion, my motion accordingly, then.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, further discussion? All who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, thank you. Negotiated contract, 2007, 2010, it's really just informational, right?
It's all it is in there, it's, all the changes are highlighted. It's good for you to have a copy, you never know when you may need to refer to it.
God forbid.
Please.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Department update, budget update.
I've given you all a copy of my prediction for June 30th, along, actually along with a little note from George, you asked about pipes in the building, current condition of pipes in the building.
So if I understand this right, the pipes running from the roof drains in the old section of the building are, are of the same age and in the same condition as the soil pipe in the staff bathroom that basically gave out because of wear and tear.
Right, was replaced on that Saturday, yes.
Right, so that's just for reference. And the coil for the air exchanger unit in the library burst on March 10th. Seems likely to have frozen, and we're waiting for more information about that. Then numerous valves in the water lines are in poor condition. One in the middle of this, one at the end of the middle school section is frozen in the open position and can't be turned off.
Right.
There may be others in a similar condition. And then the water heat lines have a lot of corrosion, especially in the fittings and the valves. Okay?
Did he express an opinion on repairability or feasibility of repairs?
No, we didn't really go that far. I mean, it's a situation where you're probably looking at replacing them all. I mean, if you were to do a few here and there, yeah, you could. But there's just so many, so many issues when you disturb them because of the issue of it, some of them being frozen, not being able to turn them off. There's a lot of places where there aren't shut-off valves, so periodically, when there is a leak, you have to find out where to shut it off. The system is, is quite old.
Now, you talked to the, the insurance people came, right?
And we got to the library.
You told us last time, I think, that, you know, after this damage, they inspect it and they're gonna...
Right, right.
Do they, do they have concerns about, I mean, you know, one would think that since they're the ones ultimately writing the checks, if there's a big, they, they might...
Well, certainly, they, you know, they can't really make recommendations about, you know, whether or not you replace things, but you know...
They're not going to change the premiums.
They're not going to change the premiums, but, well, I will say that, you know, the more claims you have, it's kind of like car insurance, you know, the more damage you have, it's going to raise your premium, yes.
But we're not to that point yet, and they don't do that.
They, that happens, you know, your, your experience does play a part in what your premium will be. We've been very fortunate, we haven't had a lot of incidents at the high school. I'd say that this one at the library, we're up around 20,000. So we may see...
Is that what the damage was?
That was what the damage, because a lot of it was books. So we may see an increase in our premium... So we may see an increase in our premium next year as a result of that. It's quite possible.
I guess you can't blame them.
No, no, it's kind of, yeah. They've been very good, so...
Thank you.
As far as the budget goes, that's pretty close to what I predicted the last time I gave you an update. I will say again, it's conservative. I did learn just recently that as far as the accounts for special ed, the tuition account is probably gonna have a surplus. So we probably would add another 50 to 75 to that, $75,000. So I'm comfortable that we'll have a balance. Bulk of that, I would say, is due to the health insurance. As you recall, when we changed health plans, we were expecting a savings, so, you know, somewhere around there. I've included with the update some items that we talked about. We talked about the roof that we might consider going ahead with and utilizing some of that surplus before year-end. You asked about the roof and getting another opinion, another estimate, and we did contact someone, and they'll be in with another overview of our roofs at the high school.
This is an all-in estimate of $26,800 to...
Patch and repair.
Patch and repair. All the roofs, it's not really a roof.
Right, all of the sections.
And also do some masonry waterproofing and some masonry repair.
I put that first because I guess for me, that would be a priority. You know, we've had several leaks this year. If we don't do some patch and repair, it's gonna continue.
Have you checked any of their references?
Yes, actually, you have them in the back there.
I mean, have you actually called them?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't, no. But I will do that.
Or any of them?
I will do that. And as I said, I will, we do have another estimate already from our current roof company. And then we have a third one coming in to do some...
I don't remember the price range of the other. Are we gonna get a comparison of some kind?
I can give you a comparison at the next meeting, if you'd like.
That'd be helpful.
Okay. And then some other items. One of them is the modulators.
I'm sorry, Sue, are you looking for action on this?
No, not necessarily. I know you've just gotten this information, but I wanted to give it to you and hope that at the next meeting, we can make some decisions on how you might want to utilize some of the surplus.
Yes, thank you. And then this is...
Modulators.
Modular repairs.
Right, we talked about the condition of the current modulators at the elementary school. And could we do some things to repair them? And this is a list of some of the items that we might consider.
Were you considering the cost of simply replacing them or upgrading them?
It would be what we had at the la, what we had for proposal when we put it out for vote, so...
Right.
So this is for the elementary school modules?
The two elementary schools.
It says high school in his quote, so...
Oh, does it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, just double checking.
$21,280 to make a variety of repairs.
Again, you know, you can think about that at the next meeting, make some decisions.
It's just troubling that this is probably the value.
We went off the air for a moment.
This is probably the value, or an approximation of the value of those structures.
At this point, yes. Another item is the floor in the gym area stage. We have an estimate on that. It's in pretty poor condition.
This looks to be in the $23,000 to $24,000 range?
For the floor. No, actually, there's three different options, yeah, how you choose to replace that. There's three different options there, so...
I see. All right, so it's all in the range of $9,000 to $10,000?
Yes. And the last item that I included here is, at the elementary school, we did some lighting upgrades with public service. They have a payback, sort of, they help you out with a little bit of a grant. So we had them come into the high school and look at what they thought might be some options to help with some energy savings. And this is the results of that estimate. It actually is a whole packet. There's a lot more to it. This is just basically what they came up with for a price to, I think this included replacing the gym lights and the lighting in the music band room, and then a couple of lights throughout the building that we could recognize some savings in the electricity cost if we were to replace them.
Okay, so this is projecting $14,800 initial investment with a rebate of $3,700?
Correct.
For a net investment of $11,000 and projecting payback on that within three years.
Right, correct.
And then the savings of... What?
The annual savings would be about $37,000, right?
Per year going forward.
Yes.
Okay.
So I just thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Sue? Audit report?
You have the pages from the 2006 audit.
Oh, I'm hot in the heels of the 2005 audit.
Right, right. So we're back on schedule. I'd just like to say that.
No difficulties noted.
Have you read through it? No material weaknesses? Everything's fine and...
We have the full copy too, if you would like it to look at.
Any questions about the audit? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. No control issues or financial issues noted?
None.
The financial documents that we reviewed fairly and accurately represent the actual financial condition of the district.
That's correct.
Which is good to know. Resignations?
Should be a resignation in your packet for Jennifer Fox, part-time biology teacher at the high school. I'd ask that you accept her resignation.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Jennifer Fox's resignation.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Nominations?
This is really the best, one of the best parts of the meeting tonight in that, you know, you got a sampling of some of the faculty that we have, that we're fortunate to have at the elementary school as well as at the junior, senior high school. And I'm pleased to present to you tonight a slate of staff for the 2007, 2008 school year. We have very fortunate to have a staff that's really committed. They're committed to the children, number one, and to the families and to this community. And time after time, we just can stand proud of the work that they do and the contributions that they make. So as your superintendent, I'm very proud to be able to present this slate for the 2007, 2008 school year.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the nominations of professional staff for the 2007, 2008 school year as presented.
Did you get the list, by the way? Did you get a final list? Do you have your final lists?
We did see...
We got a list.
We got the list last time, not the final.
Okay, before I do that, then why don't you take this?
You didn't sneak anybody in.
I didn't sneak anybody in.
Who's Murray? Isn't your dog's name Murray?
No.
What's your dog's name?
Marty.
Marty. Who's Marty Murphy? Why is Marty Murphy on the payroll?
Yes, right, right. No.
I'm sorry, I thought you named him.
Yeah, you did. I couldn't figure out what you were talking about.
That makes two of us.
They're broken out into two groups. One is your elementary on the first two pages, and then your junior, senior high school staff on the next pages, on the next two pages.
I guess I just assumed that it was the same as the old list, and it is, isn't it?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with no substantive changes, I'm pleased to make the motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for staffing for the '07, '08 school year.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Manifest, Cliff?
I'll make a motion to accept the March manifest totaling $282,268.91.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Enrollment?
You should have an enrollment report in front of you that I left at your table tonight. You can see that this month, we picked up an additional three students.
Three up, three down?
It is, it is, and...
One up, one down?
We picked up, this week, we picked up three more students. So it's just, you know that, it's, but it still remains in the same general area without any huge fluctuations, one way or the other.
So it's one in the high school and two in the elementary school, it looks like.
Right.
I'm sorry, in the middle school, two additional in the middle school.
Middle school, two.
Right. And then we lost a high school student. Okay? Calendar? We heard a number of calendar items tonight. The marathon was a lot of fun. Seemed to come off very well.
Yeah, I thought it went very well. The weather was certainly...
Cooperative.
Cooperative. And I think, you know, as was mentioned by Mr. Thompson, monies were raised for several charities, including the scholarship fund for Derrick Johnson, so that's terrific.
And the whole, there's a whole wellness fair that same weekend, right?
Yes, yeah, in the gym. So hopefully, that's the first annual.
Any changes, suggestions for the calendar?
I don't have anything to add from the high school this evening, but I do have a list of great things happening at the elementary school.
Yes, sir, please, James.
We celebrated Read Across America with a performance of "Susical" by UNH trauma students, and a guest read aloud in every classroom. The elementary school has started yoga for kids after school on Wednesday. The fifth grade team took their students to Exchange City this past Tuesday. In one student's words, "It was awesome." In celebration of Music in Our Schools Month, the elementary school music department hosted its second annual dessert in a show Wednesday, March 24th. First, the elementary bands and chorus performed to a standing-room-only crowd. Good music and good food were enjoyed by all. Money was raised for our upcoming trip to the Great East Musical Festival, which will be held on May 25th. The New Market Hotshots Jump Rope Team, coached by Nancy Miller, Shayna Thorell, Nancy A. Miller, Amy Rossi, and Jill Fast, performed their annual big show for the New Market community in January. It was an outstanding display of teamwork, jump rope skills, and sportsmanship. The New Market Hotshots have been performing around the state to promote the American Heart Association Jump for Heart fundraiser. Today, over 200 students participated in our annual American Heart Association Jump for Heart fundraiser. And Friday afternoon, the students will enjoy a healthy U-assembly. This was dated the 22nd of March, so a few weeks ago.
Thank you, James. Anything else for the calendar?
That is all I have.
Thank you. Action items? Yeah, I asked Kathy to add to the list, completing the transaction involving the property behind the elementary school because I wanted to be able to keep track of its progress. So I just suggested that we add that, hopefully as a pin to be knocked down in the very near future.
That first one, is that the first action item? Is that really pertinent at this point?
Um, no. I wouldn't say taking immediate steps to purchase is pertinent. I think it's held in abeyance. I think it's deferred. It's my opinion.
I agree.
I think the second one is always an action item. It's a standing action item. That is evaluating the availability of funding from any source for any reason consistent with our mission. And honestly, I think to continue to pursue discussions is somewhat held in abeyance.
Where are you...
I've jumped down to the second or third from the bottom.
Yeah.
It's great when you have an action item list and you just say everything's put off into the indefinite future.
Well...
Lets you off the hook nicely. Lets us off the hook nicely, so... And we have the principals reviewed tonight, so we knocked that pin down. Anything that needs to be added to the action item list? Okay, and then feel free to contact Kathy directly if you think something needs to be added.
Mr. Hawkins, could I bring you up to date on one issue, one to other?
Please.
I have just a copy of a letter that I sent to Jim Hilton, Recreation Director. Jim and I meet, have been meeting pretty frequently around the Land Rock Field. And they are going to be replacing the lights on A Field. As you know, that no one could determine the stability of the lights that are on that field. They are now down. All those poles are gone. There's money in the capital improvement fund to replace those. So that will, that project will begin preliminary after the fall season and again in the spring. So they'll be putting up new lights.
That's the Recreation Capital Reserve Fund?
Recreation Capital Reserve Fund, not the school. In addition, they will be doing work on B Field. It will be completely graded out, dug up, redone, regraded, and reseeded. I've met with Mr. Edgley and with our varsity softball coach, Jack Brown, as you saw in my letter. And everybody is in agreement when these things will be done so that the field will be in much better shape. Those were both, in my opinion, safety issues that needed immediate attention.
They can do that over the winter?
Well, they'll start right after soccer season. They'll begin the work, and then they'll finish it in the spring. The B Field will not be able to be used in the spring so that Jack is going to have to reschedule his varsity games and use the Nichols Field.
He was beating Howcroft.
Yes. I just wanted to keep you abreast of those things that we're trying to get taken care of.
It's just kind of hard to picture all the grading and work, you know, in the winter.
They will begin, well, they'll do some of it in the fall, and then in the spring, they'll finish it.
You'd be amazed how quickly people can move dirt.
The demolition will go quickly, for lack of a better word. And the, you know, but they'll have to wait on the reseeding and sodding until the spring's in full swing.
They can install the drainage systems and things like that.
But it's worth it because then our teams will be on a field that is much more safe. Right now, that's not a good place to play.
The diamonds at Beanie Howcroft were rebuilt a year and a half ago or so.
That's right, that's right.
They're in reasonably good shape right now.
This is, and just one more thing, I have an FYI from Marie Cooper. And she is very pleased because she was the recipient of a Verizon Foundation grant for "Link Together." And she has been approved for a $10,000 grant to begin an after-school program for our middle schoolers. And that's been an identified area where people felt that the opportunity for more supervision, more structured activities for our middle schoolers would be beneficial. Parents were very interested in that. And so she worked with Sue and Pat. They submitted a grant and were awarded a $10,000 grant from Verizon. So just again, an FYI for you to... She was thrilled. Marie was just, she was just pleased because she's been really trying to be very active in that area so that she can, her program can grow.
Marie does a great job.
Yes, she does. That's all I have.
Is a great friend to the children of this town, always.
She is.
Always has been. Okay, let's, shall we head back into Forrest's letter?
All right.
Forrest's proposed letter. I'm not really crazy about the quote because I don't like the word impossible.
I wasn't alive when he wrote it, or said it.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure.
But I'm not crazy about the word impossible because I think people can learn and adapt and grow.
Well, no, it's not saying that that can't happen. What it's arguing against is a closed mind.
Ah, okay.
And which is related... And which is related to paragraph two.
Don't you love being the one who gets to draft the things for us? Everybody gets to just...
It's like being a lawyer.
It's okay.
Next time, well, somebody else will take the turn.
That's why it's a draft.
No, you, you gotta quit...
That's why it doesn't have my signature on the bottom. We've all gotta agree that it's what needs to go out.
Well, I appreciate your thick skin on that.
Well, I don't intend to rewrite it or anything, I just want to make sure that it doesn't, that it says what you intended to say, that's all. This is really hard for me.
I'm sorry?
This is very difficult for me to take off the lawyer hat for a second and just kinda look at this thing.
I think it's, I think it's, really, this letter is just an introductory, you know, i- it's an introduction. Um, I, I, I think it substantially introduces the community to the, the, uh, new dialogue and new attempt at outreach that we want to do. I, I, I think it's good without any real substantial changes, personally.
I want to make sure I understand the third paragraph. "This is a question of great importance and strongly held belief." What, what do you, what do you, what do you, I'm not sure I understand what you're driving at in terms of what you mean.
The development of options for secondary education in New Market certainly is a, whether it's facilities or whatever the options are, is a, is a top priority. It is a, an important, it is a question of great importance, and, uh, in this community, there are many strongly held beliefs.
Yeah, I would just, okay, then make it plural. Beliefs.
That's fine. I debated over that S, actually, when I was writing it. What I will do is take any changes, since the power's now back on at my house, I can, uh, get it home and email it in with any changes, 'cause it's on my hard drive.
I would, um... And the second paragraph, I would, I would strike "there-related," educate, just say educational programs and facilities.
What paragraph, Chris?
Second one.
You say the second paragraph?
The second paragraph. Future of educational programs and there rela, I would just strike "there-related," educational programs and facilities. Just trying, all I want to do is simplify it.
Just strike "and there-related facilities"?
No, just the words "there-related."
There.
Oh. Yeah. And I've done that several places in here, try, just try to take some out of the extra transitional vocabulary out of it, that... Just the way you talk rather than the way you write.
Right, so the fourth paragraph, I would strike the word "ultimately," 'cause they're probably gonna be sent more than one a se, survey, in the way we've kinda laid this out. I don't know how many surveys there's gonna be.
I'm sorry?
I don't know how many surveys there's gonna be, there may be more than one.
In the second to last paragraph, um, second sentence, formal participation may be needed, or will be needed. I'm thinking formal or informal or just participation.
Just participation, certainly. I wrote this letter before some of the other thinking evolved, and so, when it became a presentation of data rather than a recommendation, that eliminated the need for formal participation at some level, so.
The, um, last paragraph? The first sentence?
Mm-hmm.
I would change that to read, "We look forward to this process and encourage every community member to participate." I think it just, it just simplifies it a little bit.
Yeah.
I like that.
I think it's great. Nice job, Forrest, thank you very much. Further, um, comments, suggestions?
If you get this to us tomorrow, then, and it, we'll get it, we'll start the production and then, and get it out.
I just have a question, what happens typically as we send the one sheet? We fold it, and on one side will be the address. Do you want anything here? It'll just be blank?
I might suggest just, um, Educational Futures Committee meeting, uh, senior high schools, September, April twelve.
Meeting announcement.
Yeah, is that okay?
What I will do is, um, I'll make up a half-page flyer, you can orient the Xerox machine as, you know, to a double-sided copy appropriately when you make them then.
Okay, great.
But is the quote staying? Did we resolve that?
Yes.
I think it should.
Quote is staying, alright.
Yes, it's staying. Um, should we have a motion to approve, uh, the sending out of this thing under our Aegis as amended? I'm willing to entertain such a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, send out the letter as amended, uh, over the name and s, of the New Market School Board.
Second?
Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you, Forrest, I just want to have that on the record so we can spend the money, and there's no question that it was approved by the boards, there's an audit trail.
Great, we will, um, since you have a contingency fund, um, we, we will use that school board contingency fund to defray the costs.
Okay, now, we need to have non-public to discuss personnel and real property?
Yes.
So, I'll entertain a motion to go in the non-public session to discuss, uh, issues of personnel and real property.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
April seventeenth, seven P.M., at, in the band room at the high school.
Chris, I'm gonna go ahead and give each reporter a copy of just the outline piece here. That is the proposal. I, I, I'm not, I, I would rather not provide the letter tonight, because it's a full draft form.
We'll, we'll, uh, email it to you.
They can email it, yeah. We don't want to email you an accurate...
Thank you, James.
Hi, James.
Good luck.
Yeah, I hope so. Good luck. It's not so bad at night, though, he's crawling to the covers.
Yeah, I know.
Well, if you have heat, though.
Yeah. Well, you gotta get under a lot of covers.
Getting up in the morning, ah!
I've heard they said Saturday.
Thanks, Penny.
I heard they said Saturday for some people.
I know.
Really?
That's what I never said.
All day with a bunch of rich, selfish...
Chris, do you, your power out?
Yeah, it's been out all day.
It may be back, ours is on again.
Oh, good.
We're just up over the hill from you.
Kathleen?
Rich selfish people who have drunk so much Kool-Aid.
Can two people that are married be on a board together?
I would imagine it'd be challenging to, um, avoid, um, meetings potential.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I just wondered, there's nothing, there's nothing, but I'll do that prohibits that.
Let's not talk about this kinda stuff. Talk about what we're supposed to talk about.
I was gonna update you on some personnel, and, um, just kinda waiting for Paul. While you do that, I can, you can look at this.
Very good, Forrest, thank you very much. With this now?
Same now, same thing, so you can share.
I saw it.
This is, uh, this is Dodd's land. Uh, these are the four pieces of property, uh, using the M-G-I-S system. We identified the wetlands and the rivers, uh, the white is the Dodd's property. Um, you can see one side of the street, if you look here, that's, um, Grant Road. Linda lives, you know, on the right-hand side.
Russell fifty-eight.
Yes, thank you, Chris. And that's right there, that road that, that heads down, uh, is Neil Mill. That's where we looked, remember we were looking, how wet it was out there? Well, now you realize that. The land, although it doesn't, the, I, I'm gonna get another map, she's gonna do topo for me, the topography. The bill suggested that I do this so that we could see if it is usable before we get too excited. And as you can see, we have fairly good-sized pieces that are usable.
And this is, I'm sorry, I'm, the Dodd's property?
Yes, the whole, the Dodd's estate. I say estate because his sisters also have ownership in this. The mother left all of this.
So, we had a, a, a mother who left all the white parcels? And it's presently owned by how many children?
Three.
Linda Dodd's, our Linda Dodd's is one of three.
Her husband, her husband.
And his two sisters.
Mr. Dodd's.
I see. And, um, uh, who lives on the property? Do all of them live on different parcels?
The only one that lives is Linda lives here in this part, parcel right here. And then, I think it might be this little yellow one right here, forty-nine.
It's Glenn's house.
It's Glenn's, I think so, yeah.
Right here.
He lives, his house is way back from the road.
Because she said to me, would you be...
Looks like person forty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see it very well.
Okay.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Would we be able to buffer? I said, absolutely, don't even, you know, a lot of problems.
No, Glenn's is forty-nine.
Glenn's is forty-nine.
That's down there, that L-shaped one?
Yes.